To a regularly scheduled meeting of the common council of the city of Hartford. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask you to please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, Shannon.
The mayor and all alderpersons are present except Alder Person Savage and Alder Person Phillip who are absent and excused.
Thank you very much. We have before us the common council minutes of September 10th, 2024.
Move to approve?
Move to approve by President Resniak, seconded by Alder Person Turchi.
With a side note.
With a side note.
If you paid attention here, we saved almost $24,000 on an air handling unit for the fire station, so once in a while we get nice surprises like that, so almost the $24,000 savings. Thank you, Tony.
You took my steam out of item B. See, that's...
Oh, I'm sorry.
[laughing]
Well, anyway, I still move to approve.
Okay, thank you.
Motion by Alder Person Resniak, seconded by Alder Person Turchi approving the following items on the unanimous consent agenda, the common council minutes of September 10th, 2024, and accepting the bid from J&amp;H Heating, Inc. for the project amount of $24,153 for a new direct-fired air handling unit at the fire station, which is $23,847 less than the amount allocated for this project in the approved City of Hartford 2024 budget.
Thank you very much. And President Resniak was right, that was a phenomenal saving, so always appreciate when we can save that to go into the Council Bahamathon. That's always a nice thing. That's humor, by the way. Yeah, humor is difficult. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Thank you. Communications, Shannon.
So, I included in the packet the City of Hartford Election Day contingency plan, which I just completed. It's just for your information, if you wanted to look it over, it does not need to be approved. It's just kind of an FYI. So, I don't know if anyone had any questions or...
If anybody has questions for Shannon, you could just ask if you'd like. You were very thorough, by the way. I looked it over, it's like, wow, I didn't realize we needed a contingency plan of that extent to vote now.
Yeah, just in case, so...
It's a great thing to have it in place, but a little spooky that it has to be there.
Yeah.
On some of the items, so. Wonderful. Okay, thank you very much. I'm glad we do have it in place. At this time, we have time for appearances and citizen comments. Anybody wishing to come up and address the common council, any citizen or business, you're more than welcome to come up, state your name and address. You get three glorious minutes. Going once, going twice, going three times. At this time, the mayor's report, I just wanted to thank everybody who had anything to do with our German Fest. I thought it went extraordinarily well. A good time. We try and beat the crowd into our Oktoberfest in September, so I think we beat most of the other communities, so go Hartford, it's happening here. With that, we have aldermanic requests. President Resniak.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Alder Person Regan.
Nothing tonight.
Alder Person Curly.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alder Person Garza.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alder Person Turchi.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alder Person Webb.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Alder Person Kohler.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Wow, there must be a Brewers game on. [laughing] Okay, let's see.
Standing committee.
Yes, yes. Standing committee reports finance and personnel. Who's doing finance and personnel?
I am.
Oh, that would be President Resniak.
All right. Two items tonight, discussion and consideration approving the HADC office lease for Office L-21 in the lower level of City Hall. HADC wants to rent the lower level of City Hall room. Who's covering that? Anybody? Shannon?
I will be, yep.
For a whopping, what is it, $284 a month?
Um, it's $3,408 a year.
Which divides out two. I thought it was in there.
I don't know.
I was just trying to impress you that I actually read it.
I'm pretty sure the zero we were getting.
Yes.
So, the HADC has been leasing office space in different buildings since it was first formed, and most recently, they had an office in the Mill Stream Building. Members of the HADC board have inquired with the city if we had space which they could lease, and by having the HADC executive director under our roof, it will help build our partnership to make sure we are all working in continuity for economic development and the betterment of our community. The HADC office would be in the lower level of City Hall near the council mailroom hallway, so it'll be in Room L-21. The city, like I said, would be gaining rental income off a normally vacant office, which would equate to $3,408 a year. So, we recommend the approval of the HADC office lease for Office L-21 in the lower level of City Hall.
Any questions or comments for Shannon? That, back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Anybody wishing to move forward? We have Alder Person Regan, seconded by Alder Person Curly.
Motion by Alder Person Regan, seconded by Alder Person Curly approving the HADC office lease for Office L-21 in the lower level of City Hall.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Good, we'll have to get that big portrait of Tom Hostet hanging in there then, so.
Item two, discussion and consideration approving a change of registered agent for J&amp;M Limited doing business as Westside Mart. Shannon?
So, Mandeeb Dran has taken over Westside Mart, J&amp;M LTD, DVA, Westside Mart in its entirety, so they have filed a change of registered agent, and everything went through the police department, background check, everything, everything is good to go, so we're just seeking approval.
Questions, comments? All right, back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Would be looking for approval, Alder Person Webb, Alder Person Regan.
Motion by Alder Person Webb, seconded by Alder Person Regan approving the change of registered agent for J&amp;M Limited, DVA, Westside Mart.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. We skip up to item number 10, resolutions and possible action. We have four resolutions proposed. First one, item 3693, a resolution to adopt the Washington County All-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Shannon?
Um...
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I was gonna say, Tony. Our fire chief, thank you.
Good evening. So, this is an update to the last version, which was the 2018 version. Speaking with retired chief Paul Stevens, the city has adopted the county all hazards plan for a series of our versions going back at least till 2013 that I found, and I believe '08 was before that. So, this is a requirement, if the city wants to be eligible to get funding back from FEMA, should there ever be a disaster, so the suggestion would be to adopt it. It has been done in years past.
Yes. Super. Any questions, Mr. Tom? If not, look for a motion to approve. Alder Person Curly, Alder Person Webb.
Motion by Alder Person Curly, seconded by Alder Person Webb for the adoption of proposed resolution number 3693.
Any further discussion? Just so, Chief, unless I hear your pager go off, you must stay for the rest of the meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Item 10B, resolution 3694, a resolution approving the preliminary plat for Copper Trails subdivision. We've seen before, and we have our city planner, Jacob, go ahead.
All right, so tonight, we're looking to approve the preliminary plat for Copper Trails subdivision. The subdivision is located on North Main Street, heading out of town here. Here are the boundaries, the airport's right up in here, in the northwest corner here, and then Main Street going up, and we just recently had done a jurisdictional transfer with the town of Hartford for that North Main Street portion. The subdivision, again, the area with the outlot or without outlots, so it's about 26.92 acres that are being developed into single-family residential units. They're detached units, so it's your traditional single-family homes. The average lot size is about 10,000 square feet, 10,000 square feet. The minimum size is 8,000 square feet, with the median being 9,432 and the maximum being 21,693 square feet. So, anywhere from .18 acres to half an acre. With the outlots, again, then it becomes about 76.75 acres. If you look at the actual preliminary plat, it states that there's about 86 acres in there. That missing temper, that missing 10 acres is what is the right-of-way dedication for the subdivision. When it's all said and done, based off of what the area with the outlots, this comes to about a density of 1.46 units per acre for this Copper Trails subdivision. Here is the subdivision. There are four cul-de-sacs on that, there are four outlots as well. The developer was very gracious in putting Outlet 4 to create a buffer there with the one township parcel there to reduce conflict in the future, so that's very, very nice of the developer to do that. Otherwise, most of the Outlet 1 and Outlet 3 are for stormwater pond, and then Outlet 2 is mostly wetlands. And this is kind of a zoom in on that subdivision here, and again, there's a buffer for the township parcel there, and then the development, again, you can see there's varying density or size of lots with varying densities in the different cul-de-sacs. And here's a topographic, again, you can see the wetland area on the eastern side, and then, for the most part, it's upland. There is some wetlands along what will be a Copper Trail Road down here that will have to be mitigated through the DNR as part of the process, but there are developers that are well aware of it. And that's Outlet 2, which is a very large piece of the land. And that's about it. Any questions or anything?
Go ahead, Turchi. Oh, Alder Person Turchi.
Just a reminder for everyone, how many lots are there, again?
112 units, or lots, yes.
Thank you.
President Resniak.
Last year, Mr. David Eli was here. He owns land adjacent to and across the road. He was very concerned about stormwater management.
Correct.
Did I see on the map, there's three retention ponds going in there?
There's two retention ponds, mostly on the west side, which we'll address that. Again, our city engineer will review that, the subdivision plat, as well as the impacts on the properties around the subdivision as well.
Well, that was the big concern, was the area around there, so you think you got the stormwater management under control?
There will be a stormwater management plan that will be part of it, that will be reviewed by engineering staff, and it will be recorded at the county, so it will be a legally binding document.
Good, because I need to get back to this gentleman, he was very concerned about it. Obviously, he's been flooded out for several times, several years, actually.
And I believe Joe DeYoung has met with that individual.
Yeah, David Eli, his name is. Okay, thank you.
Yes, Alder Person...
So, I remember there was this recommendation with this plat, and they were talking about having against the one township that's going to be in the center of that, on the north side, with Lot 1, 2, 3, and 4, if there's any consideration to put three instead of four lots up against that property. I see the outlot, was that the concession that they were able to?
Correct. That's their answer, too. Instead of reducing density, they put that buffer that will be owned by all the, by all 112 units. It'll be joint ownership of the homeowners association for that subdivision that will maintain and take care of that.
Okay.
Joe Currie is smiling back there, so I think we're okay. She's smiling.
I did come up to the thing tonight.
I noticed that, I noticed that.
All righty. Okay, how would we like to move forward on this? Look for a motion to approve. Alder Person Phillip, Alder Person Turchi.
Motion by Alder Person Kohler, seconded by Alder Person Turchi for the adoption of proposed resolution number 3694.
I was missing him. Any further comments or sarcasm? Or hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Thank you. We're now up to resolution number 3695, a resolution creating tax increment district number 13. City of Hartford establishing its boundaries and approving the project plan. And just for a bit of history, the Joint Review Board, which represents the five taxing districts, which are, let's see if I can get them, Joint One, HUHS, the Technical College, County, and the city, along with the citizen representative voted unanimously, as did the plan commission, so this is our last step in this process. Go ahead, did you?
All right, so this is, again, TID number 13. It's a mixed-use TID. This is our first mixed-use TID, I believe, that we have done. Again, how a TID works is there's a base value, which is the current value of the properties, they're all taxed at the same rate, but once you create the TID, any improvements to those parcels or any increment above what is already generated goes into that TID and not back to the city or to any of those taxing entities. And then after the termination of the TID, then everyone gets their split-out share of that, of that new tax revenue.
And just so it's straight, tax increment financing is the process we're going through to establish a tax increment district, which is the TID. Just so if you hear TIF or TID, after this time, it's going to run fairly synonymously that those two would...
Correct. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Yep. So, with mixed-use TIDs, at least 50% of the land in a TID has to be classified as a mixed-use area, so it has to be industrial, commercial, or residential, and it cannot exceed 35% of the acreage, not the number, but not the number of land plots or parcels, but the acreage at the end of the district's expenditure period. So, for a mixed-use TID, it's a 20-year TID with a 15-year expenditure period. You can do a three-years extra extension on it, so for the most part, again, it's a 20-year TID with a 15-year expenditure period for it. So, this is TID 13, this is the proposed boundaries, this is the zoomed-out version. This purplish area here is the half-mile radius that the state statutes allow us to do. In that area, we can use TID revenue to, for expenditures, if we want to do a city project outside the TID boundaries, to use TID increment to fund that. Generally, if it's a private type of development, we'll try to change the boundaries of the TID or just create a new TID, but for the most part, it's to help any public improvements that might help benefit the TID outside of the actual boundaries. And here's a zoomed-in version of it. Here's North Pike Lake Drive, Hilldale Drive, and then East Sumner Street, and on the very west side is County Trunk Highway K. The parcels that are really looking to be moving forward are these parcels right here. I hope you can see my mouse moving around. And then right up here, that's already developed, that's where all the condos are, and that's when you look at this slide here, there's 79 parcels, 57 parcels are residential, but 52 of those 57 parcels are condos in that one parcel at 230 Hilldale Drive. The total acreage of TID number 13 is 48.23 acres, with the total residential acreage at 14.41. So, it's about 29 or 30% residential in acreage. The total assessed value for 2024 for all the parcels in TID 13 is $41,742,400. And then, when you create a TID, you have to make sure there's an equalized value test. You can't have more than 12% of your equalized property values in a TID, or you can't have more than 12% in TIDs.
Of the whole city.
Of the whole city, correct. And the city is currently equalized value at $2,155,267,500, so that would allow us
241 million.
Million, sorry. Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Minor mistake.
Minor mistake, yeah, correct. So, the existing TIF value currently is $61,894,800. The new value added by TID number 13 is $41,742,400, so the total net value plus the existing TIF value increment equals $103,637,200. So, again, it's only 5% of our equalized value, so we're very low on our, on a percent of our land that's actually in TID in the City of Hartford from an equalized value standpoint. So, looking at TID 13, what are our project areas, what are the but-for's? So, anytime you create a TID, you have to have a what? It's usually set up to, it has to be set up to help development that couldn't be otherwise done without the use of a TID. Project Area A is the one that we're focusing on, and that's going to be multi, or it's going to be a senior residential assisted living facility. They need upfront funding with the but-for for the TID to help fund that upfront loan payments to start the development for a 96-unit assisted living facility along Ridge or North Pike Lake Drive. Also, as part of it, trying to forecast out other areas where we could generate increment. Project Area B, those are the two vacant parcels, oh, there's that coffee shack there on East Sumner there. Those parcels are a little difficult to develop because there's wetlands on there, so it's going to take a little more dedicated work, so again, TID increment could help, or TID financing could help a developer develop those two lots into something more substantive and create more increment. Also, outside of the TID boundary, but also within the half-mile radius, is the city's project area, which is the Shower Drive Extension, which would help facilitate access for the satellite fire station to assist with or to respond to a more higher call rate due to the assisted senior living facility there. So, it will help with the funding of the Shower Drive Extension. And again, here's the zoomed-in area. Project A is the two parcels that are currently vacant up on North Pike Lake Drive, and then Project B, again, is the two lots on East Sumner, and then Project Area C is the Shower Drive Extension, which is technically outside of the boundaries of the TID, but within that half-mile radius.
Jacob, can I interrupt? Whatever happened to the project behind the two motels? What used to be the Gillig Brothers' pit is...
That one, that is, that will probably be coming, is another TID in the future, but because of, we're currently working with the county and the DNR about site cleanup, and once we figure out the path forward on that, if it's going to be an environmental TID or a blight TID, then we'll move forward on that one.
So, we can't bring that one into this TID?
Not really, and there's pluses and minuses. Blight TIDs are 27 years versus 20 years, so that allows you to create more increment over time for a developer, as well as environmental TID. If there's environmental TID, it allows you to reset the value of the property at 0% and it doesn't count against your other assessed values or your other...
I thought that was the issue, that a mixed-use and environmental don't click together really well, which is why we want to keep them separate.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Okay, makes sense.
Besides, we all want to hear Justin repeat his detailed explanation of the boundaries.
No, no. I watched the meeting that night, no more of that.
We're still recovering from that one. So, what is the approximate base value? So, again, $41,742,400, breaking that down by each tax, and the tax rate, again, is per thousand, so 1191 is current per thousand tax rate in the City of Hartford. So, these parcels currently are generating close to half a million dollars in taxes each year, of which 194,000 are going to the City of Hartford, and then the other taxing jurisdictions getting their amount. So, that's going to be kind of the base level that we'll be continuing to receive from this area as we move along. So, the cash flow projections. So, the development is proposed to come back onto the tax, so the increased value of $21,600,000 of new development will come onto the tax roll in 2026, which will take the value up to $64,181,422. That will generate quite a substantial growth in tax increment over the period of time. We're projecting the assessments going up at 1% per year, so we have all these revenues. To help with the, to help with the upfront cost of the development for the developer, we will bond out for the $3 million that the developer's looking for, and this is the bond schedule for that development here on the left-hand side. And then also, for the Shower Drive Extension, we'll be bonding out, we'll probably be using the utilities to bond out for that one instead of general obligation. That one's a little shorter period of time, but that's over on the right-hand side. And again, we're calculating the conservative tax rate at $12 a year. Right now, we're at 1191. We've been as high as 18 to 16, but again, to be conservative and not to overvalue everything and then be in a deficit in a distressed TID, which we're trying to avoid, we're trying to be conservative here. So, these are the values that we're projecting out. So, over the life of the TID, we're projecting $6,515,816 in tax increment. The developer bond, while it's $3 million upfront, over the time with interest and stuff like that, will cost us $4,421,000. Again, the cash flow is positive, so over the life of the TID, we will see increment generated that will exceed what is required for the upfront bonding, as well as for the Shower Drive Extension. So, these are the scheduled meetings. There is one more meeting, it's the Joint Review Board, that's going to be occurring September 30th, but again, this is common council tonight. It's gone through, as the mayor stated, the first Joint Review Board and the Plan Commission, which it was all unanimously approved. And at the Plan Commission, we had a public hearing, there was one citizen against the TID, and then also, there was a concerned citizen about property values. TIDs don't impact property value, because at the end of the day, we're trying to increase the value of land, so it's, we can't dictate the market rate of any given property, but at the end of the day, we're just trying to make the property more valuable and generate more increment. So, at the end of the day, the assessed values and all that will not decline, or they not necessarily go up. It's all dependent on the market, as well as what type of improvements they do on their property. And that's it for the tax increment district.
Any questions? Alder Person Turchi.
Go back to the schedule, please.
Which one?
The schedule. So, when you said tax increment, right?
Yep.
Is that total tax increment?
That's on top of the...
No, is that for all five, or is that just city only?
That, once it, that increment doesn't go into any, it goes into the TID itself. It doesn't go to any of the taxing bodies.
Right, but that's...
The breakdown, I think, is at the next slide where they break it off, the slide with the...
So, during, so this is the base value. This is what those taxing, these taxing bodies will receive during the life of the TID. However, on top of that, that, on top of that, half a million dollars, the TID will generate, starting in 2026, an additional $269,000. That doesn't go to any of the taxing bodies. That stays into the TID for use to pay for the developer's bond, as well as the Shower Drive Extension, and that just accrues into the account for the TID.
Correct, but I guess, then where is the differential between existing value and a new assessed value for the city? Where's that number? I don't see that number anymore. Trying to calculate it and I can't see it.
So, the tax increment here, the zero one on the top here, that's where we're at. So, again, this is with 1% growth, so with 1% growth in the property values, on top of that five, half a million dollars, all it does is increase the value by $5,000. So, that $5,000 goes into TID, the other half million dollars stays to the taxing bodies. And once we have the development, the new development occurring, that $269,000 is with, is on top of the half million dollars. So, the half million dollars is automatically going into, to the taxing bodies.
It's not answering my question, but okay.
What?
It's fine.
No.
No, if you go back to the other slide.
Yep.
Right?
Correct.
That's what the current, that's current value right now.
Correct, yep.
Correct?
Yes.
What's assessed, what's the newest estimated assessed value, and what's our change in the city? That's my question. Okay? Because you're saying that the assessed value is 100, ours is 194,000, what's the new assessed value when we're done? Is that right?
I think, isn't it on the next schedule, like the new development would add $21,600,000?
Right, that's what I'm trying to get at, just, yeah, where's it at? Help me understand.
So, at the, so what would we be gaining at the end of the tax life? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. Right? Lot of good numbers, right?
Yep.
I'm trying to get to the, what's the change in the value and what's the change for the, through the TID for us as a city? Do you have that, or is...
I do not have that number.
Okay.
I can get that to you, though.
Yeah, that's, I think that's important for us to understand, right? I understand that there's a payback, we all get that, we understand how the TIDs work, right, most of us? I want to, I want to get it so we understand what the incremental increase in tax value is and how much does that go back to help, right, offset whatever we do in the city.
Column four takes it from $41,742,400 up to $76,770,446, so, I don't know, my math, what, 20 or 35 million dollars increase?
I don't know, I just, right, so in the future, right, can you have a slide for that?
Future projections on...
Yeah, first, your projections of what the future assessed value is going to be, and how that breaks down. Okay?
Okay.
Over a, right, amortized period of 20 years, right, was your amortization schedule, right?
Assuming our tax rate stays the same.
Yeah, I mean, you gotta, you gotta keep some variables consistent, right? That we know that there's, right, a rate of, and whatever.
A constant, right.
Yeah. So, if you can do that next time we look at something like this, that'd be helpful.
Okay.
Without any more discussions for Jacob, ah, Senny? If not, would look for motion. We have Elder Person Curly, seconded by Elder Person Regan.
Motion by Elder Person Curly, seconded by Elder Person Regan, for the adoption of proposed Resolution Number 3695.
Okay, for the creation of this new tax increment, tax incremental district number 13. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those no. Motion carried. Item 10D, Resolution 3696, a resolution authorizing the city of Hartford to enter a developer's agreement with Newman Developments LLC. And that's, I believe, for the Copper Trails subdivision, correct?
Correct. So, the city of Hartford, again, we're expecting to have the Copper Trails subdivision assessed out at, once fully developed, at about $44,800,000 in proposed new development. So, looking at, sorry. So, looking at the TID, it, we're looking at creating, or not a TID, it's a, it's a grant, PEGO grant reimbursement to cover the infrastructure costs of the developer, on the developer's end, for this development. We're projecting that the development will start assessing out in 2027 till 2033 for the 112 units. The increment is shown here. And again, I don't have it projected out to, at what we get back at the end of, at the end of, after 2046. I apologize for that. But we're looking at a 74.5% of, of just the city's tax alone. We can't use the other taxing districts. It's just our taxes alone going to the developer, so 74.5% going to the developer, and the remainder staying to the city to, to develop out the Copper Trails subdivision. Over the life of the TID, we're expecting that it will create, and this is PEGO, so it's, there's no upfront. It's yearly. So, we're projecting about $2.8 million over the life of the TID going to the developer, and then about $1 million going to the city. We have our own expenses, which would be the North Main Street extension of sanitary and water, which is going to be quite expensive at $527,000. So, we're looking to cover our costs, as well as part of, as part of this PEGO reimbursement program with, with the city, or with Newman Development. And looking at our net present value, it would cost us about $607,000 if we did this all right now. So, again, we're just trying to help the developer install their, their infrastructure, as well as getting the city's infrastructure out to that subdivision as part of, as part of this agreement. It's been reviewed by the city attorney, Ian, as well as Steve Volkert. So, we're looking for this to approve all this developer's agreement with Newman to move forward.
I have a question. If the money that's going to be needed, obviously, you're using, you know, the 500,000, 600,000 plus, is that money going to come forward initially from our utilities, seeing it's going to be a lot of utility work?
Yes, it will be. That is my understanding, is we're going to be using the utilities to bond out for this.
Do you know what interest rate? I mean, because that's actually a recouping, if you will. You know, the fact that we're basically paying interest to ourselves, there is an advantage there.
And we're estimating our borrowing rate at 4% for, for this.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Jeff.
All right, so go back to that schedule again. I'm sorry, I'm going to play number guy again.
Don't worry.
All right. So, what's the outlay and what's our payback? What's our ROI?
Our return on investment?
Yeah, how long?
Again, this is a 20-year project. We're, we're recouping during the time period about $1 million in our own city taxes. So, we're, we're just keeping our.
And what's our outlay again?
Our, our costs upfront are $527,000 for the North Main Street extension of utilities.
Okay, so, half a million?
Yep.
And then, we, over 20 years, we get a million?
Correct.
So, 10-year?
Correct.
Thank you.
When you were describing this, you were using the word TID, but I'm assuming you didn't mean TID.
I didn't mean TID. My, my brain was fried on TIDs. Ah, yes, it is, it's a PEGO grant reimbursement program with, with the developer.
Good catch.
Thank you. Thank you, Elder Person.
Yeah, it's not an actual TID because of the fact that it is only the city of Hartford, the other four taxing districts, as per your bill. When our vast studio audience looks at their property tax bill, the other four things are not involved in this. This is just the city.
And our, yeah. That's why I asked the question on ROI.
Oh, I, I didn't think you were going to be that Mr. Numbers today. You didn't bring your crayons.
Hey, you know, pays to have an accounting degree. All right?
Is the, is the concept here, like, we're front, we're, we're we're giving them 74.5% of what we otherwise would tax at the outset to cover the, like, infrastructure costs? And then, the assumption is that, like, because it's being developed over the life of this, we will make more in tax revenue because there is improvements on the property, and therefore, that makes it worth it. Is that a general?
Correct. And it's also allowing us to, to direct funds towards the North Main Street project, which will allow us to develop more, nor, more to the north as well.
And is it true that the difference here also is that in a TID, we would borrow in a TIF? And here, we're not doing any borrowing? We're just paying out of taxes that we otherwise would be receiving on the developed property?
We can bond. We will be bonding for some of this, yes.
Okay.
And we will be using rec fees to cover the cost on some of it, because specifically, the sanitary portion in North Main Street, we'll be using rec fees to pay that portion because it is a main lateral going to the, to the wastewater treatment plant. So, it will be covering those expenses. Not, those, the rec fees will not be used for the, the private section in, in Copper Trails. That will be, help pay for our cost as a city on North Main Street.
So, are we only borrowing for our infrastructure improvements?
Correct.
Okay.
All the non-sanitary, for the most part, yeah.
And that's the 607 portion of this?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Motion to approve, Elder Person Turchi, Elder Person Webb, seeing you guys were asking all the questions.
Motion by Elder Person Turchi, seconded by Elder Person Webb, for the adoption of proposed Resolution Number 3696.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those no. Motion carried. For adjournment. Elder Person Webb, Elder Person Curly.
Motion by Elder Person Webb, seconded by Elder Person Curly, to adjourn at 7:37 PM.
All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those no. We stand adjourned. Thank you.